Calling me, you don't want to.
You have them, Father. We thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decision.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Newland City Council, May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of May the fourteenth, twenty twenty four before you all entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. You also have the minutes of the work session on May the fourteenth, twenty twenty four. I'll entertain a motion. We adopt those.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda points, appointments to boards of commission, the first or the bicentennial commission. I think, Mr. Kretko, you have two of those. Do you have one?
Yes, sir. I have one of them that I'd like to nominate, Mrs. Brenda Jessel.
All right. It's your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We nominate and place on the bicentennial committee, Ms. Brenda Jessel. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Do you have your other?
Not this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, next agenda?
Yes, please.
All right. And then Ms. Jenkins on the Christmas commission. We have one appointment open.
Yeah, I don't have that one yet.
Next agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Kretko, we're back to you with Nora.
Next one, please.
Thank you. And Mr. Guillaume?
Uh, next agenda, please.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on. Do we have any of our students here this evening?
Yes, we do.
All right.
We have our vice chair, Annabeth Shellnut, who will be a senior this fall at East Coweta High School. Please stand. And I do believe we have Olivia Rodriguez, who will be a junior at East Coweta.
Welcome, ladies. We appreciate you being here. We know it's past school year. She should be at the beach or somewhere. So we appreciate your services in the city. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda then, Mr. Phillips, anything?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I do not have anything at this point. It looks like now we're entering to a new business with Kelsey Clark Show. First up is Ms. Kelsey with the consideration of amendments to the twenty twenty four fiscal year budget.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. As we discussed at our last meeting, we're going to be a little bit more proactive as it relates to our budget and our line items. And so we have a few amendments that we'd like you to consider tonight. The majority of those amendments actually deal with budgets that were not established. And so we would recommend that you move forward to establish those budgets. The funds are here outlined on your spreadsheet to establish those budgets. I would point out to you, if you look at the general fund, there are two areas there to look at. One is really moving funds from the city manager cost center to the finance department cost center. When I first came here, one of my first assignments really was to evaluate the finance in the H R office. And we actually hired a finance manager. And so she was actually your director of program management. And so we decided not to replace that position. So there's some extra funding there. We would like to move that to the finance department. We just lost our part-time accountant with us. And so we would like to move forward with the new position. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about the pay plan. So those dollars are really just moving. And then we had a vehicle, a motor blowout in a vehicle in our building office, and we need to replace that vehicle. So we have put some funds here to do that. And we've also replaced some revenue numbers so that we have a balanced budget. I think we can make those numbers. So there's really no impact on the budget at this time. If you have to answer any questions that the mayor council might have.
Any questions, Ms. Kelsey? Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the amendments for the twenty twenty four fiscal budget as presented. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Mr. Clark, how are you this evening? We have the contract award for the concrete pavement preservation, twenty twenty four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, let me apologize by saying I believe I submitted the agenda item work in progress. So I've got a couple of corrections to make to this. But we did put out our year two. This is year two of the three-year plan. This says year one, but it's year two. And we received three bids with Piedmont paving being the low bid at two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-four cents. That would be the recommendation, the low bid Piedmont paving. And this is for two point zero centerline miles on thirteen streets and the full depth reclamation of approximately seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand, three hundred and eight square yards.
Any questions of Mr. Clark? Is there a motion?
Uh, so moves.
Second.
Motion and a second. We approve the award as presented by staff, as recommended by staff, to Piedmont paving. Any discussion, comments?
I just said, there's nine hundred dollars difference in the two bids. Either there's collusion or they're, they bid it real close.
We've got a motion and a second. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. You're still up, though, I believe, with the consideration of work authorization, the installation of lane separator curb system.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. We've been, you know, working with ideas on how to try to physically prevent the illegal left turns at the various right-in, right-outs that we have, particularly along Lower Fayetteville Road. We are proposing a product, F G three hundred, which is a, it's a raised hard plastic curb with flexible delineators mounted in it. They're three feet long. And we came up with a configuration in the field, and you've got the map for that. And I asked for quotes, for, for, for three quotes on that, and two were responsive, and one said she couldn't get to it. And the low quote was safety signal. The amount was thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for the units that we proposed that, that could flex depending on when we get out there and, and see how we get them installed. So it's, I wanted to make sure that you guys were on board with this idea. If you want to move forward with it, that we would recommend that we go with the F three, F G three hundred and safety signal as low, low quote.
Any questions of Mr. Clark?
I, I do have some questions. I'm fully in support of this. One of the things that I noticed here, there's gaps. So can you answer the question as to why there's two, two gaps? There appears to be gaps. I could be wrong. Right there in front, if you look in front of the Dollar Tree, do you see those gaps? Or is that, am I, am I just imagining those gaps?
We have a two hundred and sixty-seven foot approximately stretch that would, would extend before and after the right-in, right-out to Kroger, the first Kroger, right-in, right-out, and the one to Publix.
Okay.
And then there's an open space.
All right.
We didn't feel that, you know, they, they may try to make the U-turn through there. We can go back and add, add them in that. But then another one of two hundred and, does it say eighty-eight?
Okay.
And that would take care of the second ride, ride-in, ride-out at Kroger.
Right. So those gaps, would you, are they wide enough for a car to get through there?
Oh, I believe I understand what you're saying. Those are, there is a, there is a raised curb that is continuous.
Okay.
There is no gap in the curb. There are spacings in the delineators.
Okay.
So, no, they would not be able to drive through those.
All right, very good.
And, and this product is also interstate tested. And, you know, don't let the public know this, but I think you can drive over them and they'll bounce back up again because they may try that later. So.
They won't.
Let's, let's make sure that they understand that.
Somebody's gonna hear that.
So let's get that on the record, right?
Let's keep that on, yeah.
Realize the papers, newspapers.
I know. I, I know. I understand that. They are, they are crash tested on the interstate, and they seem to be probably one of the most durable, if not the most durable product we could find.
Crash over like the ones that we've seen in other places.
I hope so.
So I also have, have another question. Does anybody else have any? I got a couple. So one of the things that I've noticed, and I think we discussed at our, our retreat, was also down where the Shell station is on Lower Fayetteville Road and the, where the new townhouses are going in. That also is a, an area, I remember and recall the conversation when the gentleman was before us with the townhouses. The mayor had mentioned to him that make sure that there was enough curbing available to make sure that there wouldn't be any issues with, with the problem that we're having of people making a left turn and a right, a right-in only. So I think what I would like to see is a continuation of something down there as well because we're going to be back here discussing that area for too long because you're getting the people turning, coming out of there that live there, going left. You're also getting people who live in there, coming up Lower Phil Road, Lower Fayetteville Road and parking where the little, where the yellow markings are, traffic, uh, directionals, and they're turning left or stopping traffic and turning left into there. I've seen actually people and trucks go right over that. There's been trucks coming out of the Shell station. So I think what I would like to see is a continuation of, of something down along that area to help prevent that as well. Because that's going to be a congested area really very quickly. There's more and more traffic at that particular intersection. So I think anything we can, can do to mitigate those issues upfront, rather than wait till after the fact down the road, that would be my suggestion. And then also, can you help me understand, I've been trying to figure this out, as to why we put these little berms up like this and expect people, there's really nothing indicating to people aside from them understanding that you can't make a left turn into that area or cut across. There's nothing, there's no signage. There's nothing that prevents them from concrete like this. So is that something that we do, the state does, or is that just kind of, we just do that to make it look kind of aesthetically pleasing as a right-in, right-out? I'm, I'm trying to understand how we got to this point.
Well, particularly at the Nickel Creek, um, uh, townhouse development that you're talking about, we took a standard right-in, right-out configuration of a raised curb, which is more or less a triangular shape.
Right.
With rounded radiuses on the end so they don't break off. But we extended that one a minimum length, and, and apparently we didn't go far enough. And if you give them enough asphalt, they're gonna make that left turn or U-turn and go around it. And I don't know what you can do about a truck that's willing to just drive over the top of a curb like that.
Well, what I, so down where the Chevron station is, for example, we have signs that say no left turn. But we have zero signage up along that intersection at all, indicating to the public there is no left turn. Now, I understand a lot of people disregard signage anyway. They don't read it. They don't care about it if they're inconvenienced or they want to get in there. So I, I'm just saying, down the road and in the future, to prevent this happening, so we don't have these, let's put a band-aid on it, or let's fix it to fix it permanently. We need, could we revisit how we do those right-ins and right-outs forward, going forward?
At, at the time of plan review, we can, we can evaluate each one of them on a case-by-case basis and try to determine what's the best way to, to address that for that particular site.
So may a, minimum of about three feet high, I think, would probably be appropriate and coming out of the lanes.
Can I, when you say plan review, whose plan are we reviewing? Our own?
No, these would, when a developer comes in and they want to make a right-in, right-out connection to our street, that's the time.
Right.
That we review the design.
So why don't, Mr. Phillips, why don't staff bring us a set of suggested standards for those designs? So that when we have, when we set policy, the developer knows they've got to come in on their first draft, their first submitter, with our policy. So that we're not saying, oh, but yeah, by the way, go back, you got to build it to this, when there was nothing out there that told them that they needed to build it to that. So can we, Mr. Phillips, can we get staff to submit to us a set of standards?
What I've, yeah, what I've got is a G dot standard drawing, and we would just modify that to fit the side. It, it is a, it's an angular curb that sticks up, and then it's got a paved median. It's like what you see on the bypass through Ashley Park. That they're much wider. They have the yellow delineating lines going around them, and the gore area striped out with them as well. The problem is the developer never wants to widen his road enough to put that in. So if we adopt that, then that should be the end of the discussion for that.
But that's the developer's problem, not ours.
That's right.
So we need to find out what those standards are, and they need to be in front of those folks. So when they start, as their engineers start designing it, it's going to look like this. Don't be surprised when you go in the meeting, it's going to look like this. So if we could, we could take those steps, that would be.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Counsel object?
Nope.
No? Sorry. I mean, we got to, we got to fix the problem you're discussing.
No. I mean, it's, it, it's not just Lower Fayetteville Road. I think we're going to render that issue as, as we move forward. So we got to.
Yeah.
So I have a, I do have a question. If you're finished.
Yes.
Okay. The, and you were talking about the delineators. So those are the, those are the upright posts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what were the ones along the road called?
Curb.
The curbs?
Curbs.
How high are the curbs roughly?
Three or four inches.
Okay. So, so big enough?
They're, 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 they're rounded. It's like going over those hard ceramic discs that you see.
Yep.
It would hurt.
Okay. So they'll feel it, hopefully, right? So if, if somebody runs over these things and the delineators or the, the uprights get knocked out, are they replaceable?
They are replaceable. But we're hoping that this is a good quality, that they'll, they'll bounce back up. But they are replaceable, yes, sir.
Okay. And I, and I appreciate Councilman Guillaume's thoughts about going over, you know, to the next gas station down. I didn't even say go down to the Chevron down there where people are always making lefts there and stopping traffic, you know, at that, the major intersection. I mean, it's just, it's horrendous. But I might suggest, since this is kind of new in the city, and it, it sticks up, I mean, it's pretty visual, is maybe do a six to twelve-month trial just in this area, see how they work for us. And if need be, then let's spend the money to go on to the other two gas stations or something. I'd, I'd hate to spend money and then they get destroyed too easily.
This is a great trial run. It's a, it's a high-traffic area. Tell us whether or not they're going to work.
Yeah, but we definitely need to do something with this.
And I've got one comment. If we're going to come back with a standard, this is a basically going back to fix a problem in the first place. So when you're going to look at a new installation of a road and all that, can we look at something that's going to be a little bit more visually appealing? Because this is a, let's go back and retrofit something. But if we're going to go new, then let's not limit ourselves to this solution. That's my only comment.
I think that's a good point. But I think in this particular location, we have to remember we have a federally funded project that's coming down the road later. And we don't really want to go in and start putting big investments in the roadway.
I, I'm talking about the policy. I'm, I'm talking about the policy. That's the part I'm talking about.
Sure.
No, I would agree with that hundred percent. That would be the approach.
Okay, so I opened it up for questions. We never got a motion. I never asked.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Mr. Clark, up again. Proposed speed change posted speed limit for Fourth Street.
Um, the, the next two are similar. I may just talk about them together, and then you, then you guys can, can make a decision on them separately. But when was the last time I ever came and asked you to raise the speed limit? That, I can't remember that ever happening. So we'll, we'll see how this goes. We, since I've been working here all the way back to Chief Meadows' days, and Chief Blankenship can attest to this, that we get, we get inundated with complaints at the speed limit on Fourth Street from Boone Drive at the city limits out there, Boone Drive, Belt Road, I think it's Belk in the county out there. Uh, coming down Fourth Street is just too low. People say they have to ride their brakes. They'll illegally pass them, or they, you know, they tailgate them, and they just felt like it was too slow. So when we are putting in the new traffic signal at Sunset, it was an opportunity when we did the warrant study for the signal, go ahead and do a speed and safety study. So we tacked that on to the, the, the contract with the consultant. And they generated a traffic safety report that, that I put the summary in your packet, but essentially says that we can safely post that road for thirty-five miles per hour. It, the geometry fits, the volume of traffic fits. There's not very many driveways, maybe three that are directly onto the road, and they're actually closer to the city limits out there. So based on that, we, we would recommend that we change the speed limit from the city limits at Belt Road down to the traffic signal from twenty-five to thirty-five.
I have a question about that. Nobody goes to speed limit. Everybody goes over the speed limit. If it's thirty-five, they're going to go forty-five and fifty. And there was some concern in that write-up about the traffic with the crown of the road and the visibility. I mean, isn't that a little bit of a question mark on that road?
That was addressed in the traffic study. That was, that was one of the particulars. There's a couple of things we'll need to do to get ready, and it's mostly cutting back some vegetation to get a better line of sight. But the horizontal and the vertical geometry and alignments of the road would support thirty-five miles per hour.
Thirty-five is okay.
Right.
I'm just saying, nobody does that because the police are not going to stop you if you're going forty-four on that road, right? I mean, you don't, you don't, you don't reply. I think ten, ten miles over, they don't, that's when they don't, they start applying. So now you're forty-five and fifty. I'm just concerned that we're going to sit there with the long stretch of a mile road, people going fully, because the one on Calumet's not that long, and it's designed better. But I just say you got to, you got a mile stretch there. People are going to be really driving fast. And I don't know whether we patrol it more or what we do to keep it somewhat full under control. But it, it's fine. I'm just concerned about it.
Other comments? Questions? All right. So recap for us, the speed limit on Fourth Street, because we've got two agenda items here. We need to take them one at a time. So the speed limit on Fourth Street goes from two?
Um, we're proposing we increase it from twenty-five, which is current, to thirty-five from the city limit. It's forty-five coming in from the county. You cross over Belk Road, and then we drop it down to twenty-five at the city limit, and we carry it all the way in to the end of the road. And we're, we're recommending thirty-five would be a safe speed.
Does everybody understand where we are? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the change from twenty-five to thirty-five as recommended on Fourth Street. Motion is second, we approve the change from twenty-five to thirty-five as recommended on Fourth Street. Any discussion or further questions?
I do. I get it that we're trying to cut down on confusion here, but what's the downside of having faster traffic coming through with neighborhoods off that street? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, I mean, there's several neighborhoods on Fourth where people are gonna have to make, that are not signalized.
I would, I would counter, I would answer your question by saying, I don't believe that people are driving twenty-five now. So you're actually taking lawbreakers and making them non-lawbreakers by giving them. I, you know, they're not going, they're not going twenty-five miles per hour, so...
No, they're not, but if they cause an accident or something.
Well, the, well, the safety, the traffic, the safety study said that thirty-five would be a safe speed through there, and it takes into account the cross streets, the driveways, the horizontal, vertical alignment, the crest in the road, the, the, where the ditches are placed, any of the other contextual elements like the trees and forests, and all that's taken into consideration. So it should be okay.
I think it's a good segue from the county's forty-five to our, closer into the city of twenty-five. It kinda drops it gradually, instead of just a bam, you know, dropping to twenty-five.
Okay, do have a motion is second. Any other questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, light sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, six, one. The next item on the agenda is the Calumet.
Yes, sir, Calumet, Calumet, when I first got here, and it was a fairly new road, it had been designed for a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And that's really based on geometry of the roadway, meets the horizontal, vertical curves, et cetera, for forty-five miles per hour. And then lo and behold, one day I was looking in the ordinance, and the listing of the streets that are in the ordinance has Calumet listed at twenty-five miles per hour. And I don't know why, I really feel like that was an error. But I reached out to GDOT because of their radar capabilities, and he basically, at the, at the DOT, said, "You need to stick with what your ordinance says, so that you don't jeopardize your speed detection abilities." So I went out and changed the signs to twenty-five, and put that in the back of my mind, too, because I got calls about that one, it's too slow. So rather than recommending it go back to forty-five, because this one is a collector with several neighborhoods, using engineering judgment on top of our speed detection, I could safely recommend this one at thirty-five miles per hour. It'd be similar to Summer Grove Parkway, and, you know, some of the others, there's a lot more traffic on Summer Grove than Calumet. But Calumet should be able to support thirty-five miles per hour from State Route Thirty-four bypass to the roundabout. It would remain twenty-five beyond the roundabout.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the request to go from twenty-five to thirty-five on Calumet Parkway. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, light sign. Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, Ms. Kelsey, up with the amendment to pay plan?
Yes, sir, so you'll see attached to your agenda materials or the list of things highlighted, really in red, as it relates to kind of changing the position, structure of the finance department. Also, the addition of a HR manager and finance manager in pay grade twenty-five. I had those positions a couple of months ago, decided not to fill director positions that you'll see in grade twenty-seven. But I'm very confident in the realignment of the finance department as it relates to lumping or putting together the accounts payable specialist, accounts receivable specialist, and a licensing specialist, which are three primary predominant roles that you find in the accounting department. You will also see us move up a finance technician into, from grade twelve to grade fourteen, and create a position called accountant one. We're very interested in growing talent and hiring someone who can come in and learn all the different skill sets that we have in the finance and accounting division. So we can relieve some stress, especially with our accountant, and creating an accountant two position. We have a very strong accounting team, I'm very proud of them, we've done a really tremendous job. And so I would recommend to the council to amend the pay plan as presented.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Kelsey? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the play, the pay plan consideration amendments as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A light sign, motion carried. You're still up, Ms. Kelsey, with future link.
Yes, sir, let's see if I can get this PowerPoint going. Thank you, Megan. So I wanna spend a little bit of time tonight talking about the future direction of the link. As you know, we have about five miles on the ground, so the fresher segments, one through four, are there. This is a tremendous amenity to our community, and we look forward to continuing to grow that. We actually have SLOWS funding, and the council noted, we've spent time looking at this spreadsheet. We have six million dollars over the course of the funding cycle, with two million dollars for year twenty-twenty-five. We hope that we can spend some of the engineering money for this segment and the current SLOWS that we have. That's kind of our plan and our vision. But the question is, where are we going next? And so, as you know, we've had some preliminary conversations with you to see, you know, kinda where it is that you wanna go. And so, kind of number one area that was identified was what's called Segment Eleven, which is the central downtown connector. Spent some time with our engineering firm, Columbia Engineering. Ziegler is here with us tonight, we actually went and he actually, he drove and looked at all the segments that are currently on the ground. But he, together with his team, actually went out last week and evaluated some of these segments that, that y'all have talked about. And so wanted to give you a little bit of feedback from that, and he's here, if y'all have any questions for him, to answer that as well. But certainly the opportunities and benefits here to provide connectivity into downtown, from the south and to the west side of Noonan. It does connect to our existing system. Certainly, an obstacle that we're concerned about in many segments is the railroad crossings. We also have a huge project underway in terms of engineering, Project Fifty-seven site. We think we probably need to put a pause on this segment until we figure out how this link might actually go through that project.
Which, which number is that?
This is Segment Eleven. So this is really a point-three-mile segment. Predominantly, when you look at the map, you're really kinda staying within the sidewalk system of your downtown area. Think it could be a lot more creative if we move it through that project, that five-acre tract that the city owns. And we've got historic concepts looking at that now, and have asked them for their vision of how we can get that through there and do this a little bit differently. So we, I think we'd like to put a little pause on that. The price back in twenty-seventeen, and you'll notice that all of my numbers come from the actual plans, so they're old numbers. We do imagine that these numbers will be a bit higher. I don't know what those numbers look like, but just use them as a base for consideration. So that, that's kinda where we are in Segment Eleven. Think we can certainly get back to adding that amenity once we get further along with the design of that area. Got any questions about that?
Well, not necessarily what you said, but I just sit there and look at it overall for the future. I would like for us to look at, like, when you come out of number eight, and you've got that purple that's headed towards kinda downtown, if you could extend that to downtown, that would be a way for that neighborhood to go downtown. And likewise, if you look at CE-C, it's not very far from the orange at Carl Miller Park. If you could figure a way to get there, that would save from central, you could go to Newton High School all the way one day. And I don't know whether, I mean, we just put on the general idea, but they have to go see if it's ever feasible. But I would like for us to look at that as possible future things, because the more connect places like that, it'd be just great. Instead of going through the central city for everything.
Any other comments?
Megan, what, the spreadsheet you put up earlier, I don't see it in my file, but is there a total amount we have to spend on the link? Was it in there, I couldn't see it?
Yes, sir, so we have roughly across the whole SLOWS schedule, six million dollars. So we originally had planned to try to attack the first link in twenty-twenty-five, which is next year. Maybe an ambitious goal, if we can get engineering done this year, and get construction underway. Maybe we have to combine and move money around, you know, as it relates to being able to finish a segment, or do part of the segment, or do spurs. I think that Mr. Shell is referring to.
Okay, so, once we get some, if we identify these two, this carries, and we don't spend all the money, there's an opportunity to come back and identify the next section, is that correct?
Yes.
So this is just a list of priorities to be added on to, okay, very good.
So the next segment, the city council was very much in favor of moving towards, again, you're connecting to the existing line as it comes out from really what will be the bicentennial trailhead. And it moves northward up to your public safety facility, your pickleball courts, moves across that Clark Street intersection, maybe y'all spend some time looking at, and really up to the University of West Georgia. It certainly encourages redevelopment opportunities in this area, and it connects, again, to the existing system. Again, we think the railroad is gonna be an obstacle. And as you know, we also have planning underway for the railroad district here, as you move when it's an existing connection northward. So again, we think we need some more engineering to see if we can get through there. There's concern about the path is kinda laid out, if you look at the map, right along the railroad line. And I'm not sure that the railroad's really gonna let you build the trail right up next to that railroad.
And I won't let you do anything.
Yeah.
If we get outside of their property, that's fine, but we can't, they can't do us in there.
So that, that's certainly something that we need to be aware of. We think acquisitions are going to be required for this segment, along with the future direction of what the council wants to do with that Clark-Jackson-Jefferson intersection project. Because if y'all take that lane, that lane was initially designed to be this trail system, that would carry that traffic out to the north. So that, that's also something to consider. Engineering firm pointed out to me the plus facility, the cemetery, and all the great building on the guest drive, maybe things to be concerned about. Again, the cost estimate back in twenty-seventeen was about one-point-three million dollars. This is a point-eight mile add to the system.
And so, number twelve was an option, I think some people liked it. It included, though, because of the railroad, you said, people getting through downtown Noonan of their own device, really, not, not necessarily building a trail, but, but marking, marking a path, which is relatively inexpensive to do. Then you take number twelve out to Ruth Hill Elementary, it gets you out to Fourth, Fourth Street, to where we hope one day Plant Noonan and the city will collaborate on the Auburnum. And then from there, if you were to look at thirteen, which takes you down to Newton High School, and then you're into Carl Miller Park, which is, you know, that's, that would be a really special place for that, for that trail. And we're talking years away, but I kinda prefer twelve going out, because it gives you the other option of going south. Anyone else?
So there's kinda your rendering of that, which takes you, again, from First Avenue Park out to really Ruth Hill Elementary School. Again, just to run out, there will be some acquisitions that are gonna be required there. And those basically range, from engineering firms assessment, between eleven and thirty-two, depends on where your alignment is. And, you know, where you go, and what you have to get to do that. There's also potentially six displacements, that the buildings are kinda in the way of the trajectory of the path that I think was designed here. Again, that's about a one-point-three cost estimate, going back, again, to twenty-seventeen. I think the engineering firm thinks that this is a good...
We believe that all of these segments are gonna exceed two million dollars, just to be frank with you at this point in time.
Are gonna exceed what now?
We think any of these segment options are going to exceed the two-million-dollar threshold once we actually get into construction.
But it's not gonna get any cheaper.
It's not gonna get any cheaper, though, that is correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying, are you recommending skip over eleven, then just do twelve, like thirteen, fifteen? And so we have, like, the disjointed link until we can get to the connector there on Segment Eleven?
Well, eleven, I think if you'll talk about, or maybe have our, our designer come up and talk about the wayfinding through downtown Noonan without a particular path in mind, and how we would accomplish that, if you'll just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Tom Ziegler with Columbia Engineering. Yeah, the recommendation we actually made was to do twelve, because eleven has challenges on where the alignment is with your Project Fifty-seven. That can change the game, you also have a railroad track to cross, and the, the reality is, is we felt like, you know, some of the challenge that we were given is, use the two million dollars, get a project on the ground as quickly as possible, and something that connected as much as possible. Their other challenge was to connect to, you know, downtown. We realize that's a goal, but, you know, there's so many unknowns with Section Eleven. We recommended twelve ourselves to, you know, let it sort itself out with your Project Fifty-seven, the railroad crossing. We even took a quick look, and we didn't do the original study, but we took a quick look and started looking at, I think it was a brewery or something, and the Fifty-seven, and just some other things, and whether or not we actually cross the railroad right where it's at, or whether or not we should use one of the existing bridge crossings. So there's a lot of unknowns on that one that we think should be evaluated a lot further before you move forward on that one.
So, just a thought, and kinda, since there is kinda unknowns, and I don't wanna, not trying to delay that, that end of the link, because that, that does, that connects some, you know, very positive, you know, amenities in the city, you know, between the Carl Miller, Ruth Hill, with the Auburnum, all that stuff. Would it make sense to maybe redirect a little bit? Go on Section Five, up to the city limit, stop there, then the county, they'd be ready for the county to get over to Whitlock Park. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't continue past the city limit, you know, because that little red line kinda goes out past that. But then they could, they could then connect that to Whitlock Park, and that would really open up that. And then, once we have Section Eleven, you know, with historic designs and all that kinda more worked out, then we could just start, you know, really start plugging along and get that going. So it's, it's not, I don't, I don't want it to look discombobulated or kinda disjointed, and I'm sure it wouldn't, you know, when it's all finished and completed. But it's kinda like having two sections of the link that don't connect at this point, other than going, like, on the city sidewalks and this, that stuff at this point.
I'll just, well, I'll just, in my opinion, and I, I see, the dream is, like you said, Dustin, to get it to those, to the soccer fields. But what I like about this is that we already have two trailheads. We've gotta be, one at the end and one at First Ave. So we don't have to put, we don't have to do that investment. And that's significant when you don't have a trail that connects, okay, you gotta have a, you need a place to go. So, and then, you know, honestly, if you know downtown, you already know how to navigate downtown. I would like to see, you know, paint, maybe some green paint, but, but, but I, I'm not gonna, you know, go there, but I mean, we could, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I wanna hear from you guys. But green paint does a lot to show people how to connect the two, and they just need to figure that out. So, and we see that a lot, I mean, railroad crossings, as long as you already have a pedestrian crossing, we're free to use it for our crossing, as I recall from the PATH guys. So luckily, we already have a pedestrian crossing, two railroad crossings, right, there's one at Fifty-seven and one at Arnold Grocery. So I think all that's positive, you know, and I think this would give the west side of town a piece of the link. You know, we, we need to be, remember, you know, Summer Grove really got the first piece, and, and, and so now we're trying to, to, I think we should share it all the way across to the west.
Because you can, like you say, once you get that done, you go off to downtown, it's not hard, you can get to like CJ Smith Park over there and go right on, all the way out east as far as you wanna go. I think it would help the downtown area.
I agree. I think that doing eleven, thirteen, and fifteen would, I mean, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen would be a much-needed project that would spur, I think, some development and investment into our west side, which right now is a little stagnant. And so, looking at that, bringing the amenity to the west side for those residents who are there, and for those who are looking for some more... and for those who are looking for some more investment in the west side.
Okay, any other comments?
And I wasn't saying that, just so you know, to exclude the west side. I really want the west side because there's some great amenities over there. I'm just saying, if we do five, it might delay it long enough that we can get more closer done with eleven, so we just connect and just keep going. It's kind of just like a little delay, that's all.
My response to Megan was, I want all of them. I don't have one favorite, I have all of my favorites, so I'm with you.
Giovanni.
Exactly.
We would like to design all of them for you, too.
I'd like to make a motion. Are we ready?
We can make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the proposal to move forward with sections twelve and thirteen.
Second. Motion is second. The motion is, we accept the proposal to instruct staff to move forward with twelve and thirteen. Any discussion?
I do have one question. We have three budget items, and I'm trying to, because I'm like adding the numbers up here, I'm like, we had two million, two million, two million. So what's the other segment, or are we just going to say we're not going to select it yet?
We're hoping we have two million for the third one.
I think it needs to be safe, the motion, and then move forward after we look at that first.
Okay, alright.
I just can't have those numbers.
Okay, alright, I'm just trying to make sure I understood.
Let me ask this question for clarification. You know, we're under contract with Columbia for one segment, and obviously, it appears twelve is that number one segment. I just want to clarify, when we said twelve and thirteen, does that mean we want to follow twelve with thirteen? Because we don't, we didn't, we didn't earmark on that money in the first round of year's floss to deliver both twelve and thirteen?
If I could just make a mention?
Sure.
I would propose to start with thirteen, and then go back to twelve again, because where we, when we, where we decide to connect twelve to eleven may change based on what the outcome is with the, with that. And again, that's all I want to do, is kind of give us a little time to figure out that eleven link exactly, so we're not maybe changing the endpoint, so that we don't end up with a disjointed trail that doesn't really.
I'm not following what you're saying, Dustin, what?
If, if we go ahead and do, say we do on the eastern terminus of section twelve, the purple section there.
Okay.
First Avenue Park.
Right? If, we're still debating, if there's still on section number eleven, because that's, that's the, that's the crux of the matter right now, it's kind of laying everything.
You're talking about downtown?
Downtown, correct, because it may change based on the railroad, based on the, the new, the Caldwell Tank Site, based on, you know, some other things. If the terminus decides, if we decide not to be at First Avenue Park, to where the twelve and eleven would join?
But you could change that route, and you could go through both of those parks and go over there some other way. And, I mean, downtown has got, not sidewalks everywhere, but everybody knows how to navigate it. And you see people walking all the time through those different streets down there. And so I just think, like, if we get to a park down there, that is a trailhead in itself, First Avenue Park. And it's a good place to be.
There it is, there is limited parking there, though, relatively speaking. People out of town, because I've spoken to several people out of town that have come, and they love the link. And it's not necessarily as obvious to them, again, they're, we get it. But for those folks, you know, imagine when you go to other towns, how easy it is to navigate or not navigate, and just getting around.
But, but like you said, with green paint, we could fix a lot of, to downtown for right now, no matter what, and that's not going to cost that much.
Very expensive.
If I could just make one or two comments, whether you pick twelve or whether you pick thirteen, there's more likely going to be some adjustments to what the original plan was.
That's correct.
To be very candid, I don't know if we ever made it to actually explaining the thirteen, but the two thousand seventeen estimate is already over two million, and it's going to be considerably more than that. So I don't think you would have ever gotten all of thirteen anyway. Our concept would have made a recommendation, whether or not you probably would have gotten from twelve down to the school and part of the way, or you would have gotten the bottom leg, it really depends a lot on, you're not going to get the whole thing. Same thing with twelve, as we look at that, you know, we think twelve can probably be done within the entire two million or slightly more, but at that right end, because that's where the displacements are, that's where the, don't be surprised if we don't come back after concept and say, alright, I went blank on, oh, was it Cross Hollis?
Hollis Heights.
And I believe there's one more street, if I remember where the kink is. You know, it may be that we go to that next street, and what's nice about still doing just that part is you've got connectivity of the neighborhoods, you've got connectivity of the elementary school. I believe, did you say there's potential plans for an arboretum, Meg?
Yes.
Connection to that, and then you're setting yourself up for a nice connection down to Noonan High School. So it's got a lot of advantages, but don't, don't get too locked in that what's on that paper is going to happen. I think the first four segments that were done, we didn't do them, but we went out and looked at them and compared. There's a lot of adjustments that were made during the concept and design phase. We'll probably have the same thing occur with twelve and thirteen to get you within your budget and the right limits. So it's really what pieces of the puzzle. And we debated thirteen a lot, is it better to have a high school connected to the neighborhoods, or the high school connected to Carl Miller Park? And then that's when we came back to twelve, is twelve just fits the dollars better and it connects two or three different things well. So I guess my point is, don't get locked in on the limits or the location, that's, that'll be our challenge during concept.
Thank you.
I've made the motion for both sections. I was, so maybe you asked me a clarifying question. When I asked you, Megan, we had six million to work with, okay? So I, I just did funny math, and I almost doubled it, and that's about six for sections twelve and thirteen. Your sections twelve, listen, I'll take any length of the length we get, but you're talking point nine miles, that's not significant. If we could get twelve and thirteen looked at, that's two point three. I mean, out and back, that's four point six mile walk, that's a good walk. Plus, it connects a lot, so I guess, I'm hearing you say, you know, we need to look at some things, so maybe y'all could just help me understand, with my motion, what, what would be the harm of looking at both, so that you know how you're going to get there as you're studying one of them, and then start building the first one as the funds are available, and then move into the next one?
So we actually talked about that, and I think staff liked that idea. We actually threw that out, that yes, we have a contract with y'all, and it's theoretically for a segment. Obviously, if you pick segment eleven, we make a fortune, because, you know, it's more money than what we need to design that. But if you want us to look at twelve and thirteen, we actually said another solution be, take the funds that you've awarded to us and look at those in detail from a concept standpoint, then make your decisions. And so it would take a little bit of effort, I think, on our part with the staff to make sure we're all on the same page. But I don't think that's a bad idea at all, but I do not think that, my understanding of your funding, even though you have six million, you know, you're not going to get four of it until several years from now. And so it's, it's basically taking the funds we have now, focus it on concept, figure out where we're at, then make decisions on what pieces of those, because, you know, the truth of my area is, you know, these construction costs have gone out the roof over the last few years, and this is now seven years later, not just a few years. So I, I kind of like your idea, we just got to kind of rework what our understanding is, you know. And then if we are going to design the whole thing, then it's going to require more, you know, funds for us to do that. But we can certainly look at the concept.
You know, if we don't get it planned, which is not going to happen.
Yeah, get a plan, yeah.
So that's, the motion is twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen.
And I had a second.
Second.
Other comments or questions?
Look at the conceptual, develop conceptual plans for twelve and thirteen.
For both, and then, right, as funding allows, start with the twelve, push out, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you for your clarity, we appreciate you being here. Ms. Kelsey, you're still up with the consideration of ordinance amendments and Parks, Trees, and Cultural Arts Commission. We've discussed this several times. Mr. Kramer, you have this?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay.
I get one shot.
Well, we'll see.
You have mayor and council, this was discussed at length at your retreat and recently at a work session. The ordinance amendments in front of you reflect what your direction was at our last work session. We can talk with any great specificity or not, but essentially what we're doing is we're removing the Parks Commission, adding a couple, adding some duties to the Tree Commission, which was essentially what the Parks Commission was doing, adding that to the Tree Commission. The Tree Commission will remain with seven members, voted on by this body, appointed by this body. And then the Cultural Arts Commission, nothing in the duties or anything changes, essentially you're just taking from fourteen to seven.
Questions, Mr. Kramer? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented, any discussion, questions?
Are we doing all three of these at one time, or taking them one at a time?
I would take them individually.
Alright, the first then would be Parks, the motion was for Parks.
That would be my motion to be Parks only.
Alright. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the next is Tree.
I make a motion, we make.
Second, Tree.
Motion is second, any discussion?
I had a question about this, was, this is for the combined Tree and Parks, correct now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I was looking at the, on section, division three, section two, Act two zero six, the Establishment and Purpose. It discusses all about trees, and nothing about parks. So it kind of like leaves a very vague and general, kind of just talks about in the general, improve the general welfare. That's pretty broad, it's a very broad statement there. Maybe just kind of clarify that and say, you know, some, some sort of verbiage about parks specifically.
If I may, Mr. Frick, if you would go to section two dash two zero nine, under the duties, responsibilities, and authority, look at number seven. That talks with great specificity, in particular about public parks. And is that satisfied, or would you?
It does, I'm just, just under the Establishment and Purpose, it kind of just, that's the, the broad, you know, why are we even doing this? To me, it would make sense to just be very clear in that section.
Staff?
We can make an amendment and bring it back to you. That's fine, which is.
If you so desire, we've got a motion to second, we can vote it down and then ask them to resubmit.
It's not.
Everybody on council?
I'm not sure of what you're saying.
Is it a big deal, or?
It's, it's not a super big deal, it's just, okay, so it's saying, in division, talking about why are we doing this? Why are we having a Parks and Tree Commission together? And so in the Establishment clause here, it talks very at length about trees, zero about the parks. So why even call it Trees and Parks if there's nothing about parks? And so in the, when it talks about, in section two, Act two zero nine, duties, responsibilities, and authorities, of course it talks about that. It talks about the parks in that section, one paragraph out of the seven talks about parks. I just want to make sure that, when you look at the overall broad arching, you know, the broad span of why we're doing what we're doing, kind of, why do we do what we do? Why are we doing this? I think it should just be clearly about the parks, but it does talk about the general welfare.
If I could suggest that at the end of that sentence, we could add and to provide for the study, et cetera, of parks under that section with the same language that we have under number seven. If you would accept that as an amendment, we can amend that and do it.
That's fine, but I mean.
Okay, who made my motion?
I made the motion, it's fine to amend it, to what Brad said.
Second, who's the second?
I was second, I think, I don't know, I lost.
That's too long ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so amended, are you okay with the amended motion?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, this has been where we have amended the Tree section here. Any questions on where we are, what we've done? Alright, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, Cultural Arts.
Make a motion that we accept Cultural Arts.
Second.
Motion is second, we accept Cultural Arts, recommendation of amendments, any discussion?
I have one other point. On section two, Act two one six, the composition term and compensation, it talks about seven members. And then halfway down that paragraph, it talks you'll serve three-year terms, and if you add up the numbers, it still counts up to fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Frick, we spoke with the city attorney's office, and the ordinance amendment coming around includes those changes.
To a degree, okay, no problem then, thank you.
So the motion is second would be to adopt as distributed. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next is a consideration resolution to support the downtown development revolving loan fund award. This is for the redevelopment of a property, eleven and thirteen Greenville Street. You've got this item in your agenda, Ms. Strickland is here this evening, is you, if you need questions of her, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is it second? Motion is second, we adopt the resolution in support of downtown development revolving fund award from eleven and thirteen Greenville Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you. Under unfinished business, we do have, I believe, a public hearing tonight on this property located at Five Hamilton Drive, Hamilton Bohannon Drive, this is a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, how are you, sir?
Good.
Good.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Yes, the building department discovered this unsafe structure on Five Hamilton Bohannon. The house, the roof has been collapsed, the side of the house, you can see it's been buckled. And the building department's requesting either to repair or demo. To repair the house, it will cost more than fifty percent of the tax asset of the house, and to repair or demo it within forty-five days.
And I believe the owners of Five Hamilton Bohannon Drive are here this evening. If you've got any comment, this is a public hearing, this is your time to come forward, speak to the issue, if the council has any questions. Is there anyone else who would like here, who would like to speak to the issue of Five Hamilton Drive, this is a public hearing? Alright, ma'am, if you'll state your name for the record.
Geraldine Herring.
Thank you, ma'am.
We, we in the process want to get permission to demolish it.
Okay.
Because it just costs too much to, you know, to have it rebuilt, and even fix it up. So we would just like to get it demolished and just keep the land, and you know, pay tax on it.
Sure.
And we would like probably a hundred ninety days till we find somebody to demolish it.
Is the property secure? It does not appear to be.
It is, it is not.
Okay. Our concern would be that during that period of time that you're trying to find someone to demolish, that the property is not secure? And it could be a liability for those folks in the neighborhood?
We got no, no, we got, we had sign on, no trespasser on there, you know, and nobody not living in it, had lived in it in fourteen years.
What was your request again, for how many, how many days?
About a hundred ninety till we find somebody, you know, if I find somebody before then, you know, we're demolished then. But we got to try to find somebody, you know.
So, so let me ask you, if, do you have the funds in order to demolish the property if you find a contractor?
Probably.
Okay. Any other comments from council regarding?
What would it take to secure the property?
The biggest concern is the fact that if we were to treat the loss, we're open to all that.
Right, that's the reason why I don't think it's going to be secure. Any other comments regarding, you have this public hearing, any questions from council?
So are we going to suggest some form of securing the property in order to allow for an extension, or for the ninety days? I mean, that was your question, so, we don't want to slide over that, though, we want to.
I wanted to know if, because that's, that is the concern, is that people can get into it, children could get into it, that kind of thing. So that's why I'm asking.
Had nobody, you know, had nobody been in, you know, on our property, or, you know, nothing, you know, because I go up there, here we can keep the grass and everything, and we check, you know, see, but had nobody been in there, you know.
That was up till now, I mean, going, going forward, the liability that you carry for not securing it could be pretty severe to you. So, understanding that nobody has done anything so far, doesn't mean that going forward, somebody wouldn't stumble on that property or get hurt, or whatever, and... So I guess the question is, how do you secure it to protect your? So I guess the, the question is, how do you secure it to protect yourself?
And I hate for you to have to spend money on securing the property and then just to tear it down. So if, if there's anyone else who has, who'd like to come forward to speak to the issue, this is a public hearing. Alright, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time then. And, and ask, uh, council for a consideration of maybe sixty days in order, I think a contractor is out there that could get this. Sixty to ninety days, um, so that we can get this done.
So you want to go sixty or you want to go ninety and with no secure?
I'm going to defer to staff some too. I mean, if you, do you think that's possible within sixty days to get this contracted and torn down?
I think ninety might be good.
Alright, okay.
I, I would, I would agree with ninety days on that one. Um, I think you can find somebody, but, you know, with the weather and all that stuff going the way it has, a lot of people are behind on their projects. And so it may take a little while to get somebody, but I think ninety days should be sufficient.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to grant ninety days for repair, demolish on, uh, Five Hamilton Bohannon Drive. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate you very much. Uh, the next item is the second and final reading, the ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three fiscal year budgets. If they'll have a motion on this?
Make a motion to amend. Second.
Motion is second. We pass, uh, the ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, uh, on the second final reading. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next is a request from RPM to close Madison Street between Jackson Street and Jefferson for fundraisers on July the twentieth and August the twenty-fourth from eleven a.m. to six p.m. You have, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
You have, uh, the letter in your agenda, but we also have guests here. Uh, if you have any questions of what's going to be happening at RPM?
I'm sorry, did somebody say something? I thought somebody asked a question.
I, I didn't hear a question.
Okay.
If there's a motion, are there any questions of the owner who are going to support? Actually, I don't believe, I don't know if you're the owner. You don't, you're the supporter of the events, correct?
Yeah, I just represent RPM. We, I work there, sir.
Sure. Is there a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we.
Second. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Figure you're going to make a motion to approve and.
Finishing, finishing the sentences.
Sorry.
Okay, so the motion is to approve, uh, both events, uh, before us from RPM on July the twentieth and on August the twenty-fourth from eleven a.m. to six p.m. Any discussion? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. That ends our regular agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Excuse me.
Um, you're not on the agenda? No, sir, I'm not taking off agenda of comments this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, adjourn, thank you.